All right. I think it's time to call the city council work session for Tuesday, June 1st, 2021. The first item on our agenda today is city council applicant interviews. And we'll start with Jeff Rice. If you please come forward, state your name and address.
Good morning. Is it on? Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'm Jeff Rice. I live at 1016 Oxford Street.
Good morning. I think before we begin, we can just thank all the applicants. We had three applicants for the District 2 vacancy. And we took applications through last Thursday at 6:00 PM through the city clerk's office. And those were provided to council in our packets today. And then in addition to that material, we have the opportunity to interview. That sounds very formal, but to interview those applicants. And I can see all three of them are here this morning. So before we begin, just thank you very much for coming and for coming in person. It's nice to see your faces and be able to do this in person instead of via Zoom. And I think what we're going to do is just one candidate at a time, ask each of you some questions.
David, do you have a question?
Yeah, I'd like you to go ahead and explain a little bit about what you like best about Montrose and what you like least about Montrose and why.
Okay. What I like best about Montrose is the access. This town has got the best access to the outdoors that I love. The size of the town is wonderful. I've grown up in Wisconsin. I've lived in Denver, Bend, Oregon, Missoula, Montana, Colorado Springs, and then here. And after living in Bend, Oregon, it can get tiring to live in a town that's super high tourism to where they're coming and staying, and you don't get a community feel. Montrose certainly has tourism, but they're passing through to the other communities. And we benefit from that, from taxes and their stopping. But we have a community feel here that I really like, and you can get involved and enjoy what the community has to offer. What I don't like about Montrose, I don't know. I own a house here, so the affordable housing doesn't impact me so much, but I know that a lot of others are impacted by that. I talked to people in the community that have a hard time finding housing. They're having to get creative and rent RVs and an RV park. So maybe some better affordable housing if we can get into that market. I'd like to see more representation from the younger demographics in the city, participation of government. I got involved in a neighborhood council in Missoula, Montana, and it was a wonderful stepping stone to get involved in the local government and see the difference you can make for not a huge time commitment. So I'd like to see that. And I'd like to see more focus on the biking scene for transportation. I volunteer with Montrose Area Bicycle Alliance, and we work hard to inspire citizens to bike for utilitarian purposes. The Connect Trail is wonderful, and I really hope we can build upon that and extend that network, maybe over into the more densely populated part of town to where individuals don't have to drive to access the trail, but can do it right from their house.
Anything else, David? Mr. Reed.
Good morning.
Morning. Thank you. I think what comes to my mind would be growth. The coronavirus has put a lot of people in our neighborhood and passing through here. And we're seeing a lot of people moving to town because they love what Montrose has to offer, what I moved here for, what a lot of other people moved here for. So how do we prepare for that growth? Not just with the infrastructure, with the roads, but also with the housing. I was reading through the comprehensive plan and really enjoyed it. There's some wonderful ideas in there. I like what they're talking about as far as encouraging more accessory dwelling units, maybe smaller lot sizes, smaller houses, just getting more houses into the market to get the demand up to the supply. So the growth and then also with that comes the traffic. And again, back towards the biking scene, just because that's kind of front of mind for me with my volunteer efforts for that, expanding the biking trails to where individuals can bike more, less cars on the road. I got front row parking today at the meeting. There's a lot, there's not much parking out there right now with the construction, but I was the only bike at the post when I showed up, so I got front row parking. And then also, on a similar topic, a lot of our neighboring communities have legalized recreational marijuana dispensaries. And I would like to consider that because I feel that is something that's an untapped financial resource for the community, that we could use those revenues towards whatever programs we'd like, be it a drug program, affordable housing, trails, expansion of transportation, like All Points. So I think that is something to consider, and I'd like it to be noted that I'm not even a cannabis user. If I was tested today, I would pass. So it's been a while since I've utilized any cannabis, but I just see that every time I drive south, that Ridgeway parking lot is pretty full with people, and that could be some untapped dollars that we could be utilizing.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, thanks for being here this morning. Working on councils is really an interesting, unique situation because we're each individually elected. And we, in that regard, are looking out for our, what we believe our constituents want, but we also work together as a team. So I'd like to hear from you about your leadership style within a team, because there's different kinds of players within a team dynamic. So I'd like you to talk about how you work in a team dynamic.
Certainly. I like to lead by example to kind of show people how you can get involved. And then also, I prefer to, you can never know what's going to happen until you take that first step. You might have the outline of what a plan is going to be, but it can change with that first step. So just being open and listening to others and seeing what everybody has to bring to the table and just utilizing our knowledge and what we're hearing from our districts, the other volunteer opportunities that we're utilizing when we're interacting with the public, what we're hearing and just sharing that and putting it all out there and hoping to create a setting to where people are, feel it's okay to share whatever they've heard, no matter if they agree with it or not, just to put it out there and we can all talk about it and go from there.
I guess one of the questions I would ask, you're pretty strong on biking and bike paths. What do you foresee for people who aren't physically capable or too old? Just not able to get out and bike. What do you see as trying to assist those people in kind of facilities that you would look at that would be helpful to them?
Certainly. E-bikes have become very popular for exactly that demographic, to where biking is a challenge for the physical reasons. So e-bikes are great. You know, those same paths are used by walkers. I actually, over at the Connect Trail, when I'm on it, there's more walkers than bikers, what I've noticed. So just providing those trails is going to be multi-purpose. And then the expansion of the All Points Transit for public transportation is a good start, too. So just having a wide variety of options. And obviously, it can't be for everybody. I'm not expecting everybody to sell their vehicles tomorrow and buy a bike. But just the idea that, you know, we live in Montrose, it's a slower pace of life. We have such wonderful weather. It's a flat town. How can we utilize what our surroundings are providing for us? And it just helps to really provide a really nice community when you pull into a town and you see people on bikes and walking. And you can't help but just smile when you're on the Connect Trail and see how much activity there is over there.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have a question?
When you're on a local government, small local government, sometimes you make decisions that are not popular with a smaller subset of people. Can you tell me a time and a way that you have aided in communication with what's really going on and conflict resolution?
Yes. Well, I don't know if I have an exact example, but I know what you're talking about. You're never going to please everybody. There's always going to be somebody commenting on a Facebook group, and then that's going to maybe get more run, and it might feel like that's the majority. But if you know what's right and you are hitting those points that the masses are wanting, I think that's what you focus on. And then also explaining to the individuals. I sat in on a meeting here shortly after I moved to town where the topic was trying to eliminate the grocery tax. And I really liked how that was ran, and it was an excellent meeting, very educational. And I thought maybe, I understood where people were coming from, but they didn't understand the numbers that if we were to show the numbers of like, hey, here's your $100 grocery bill. This is how much tax you're actually paying. Meanwhile, all of the people that are passing by are paying that same amount. And when you reference how more than 50% of our tax revenues are from out-of-town people, you just show the facts. And you can't, you can't force it upon them, but you can just present the facts and hope that they can critically figure it out and understand what you're talking about.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much, Jeff.
Thank you.
Anthony Russo, could you please come up, state your name and your address for us?
Mr. Mayor, city council members. My name is Anthony Russo. I live at 19 Eaton Court, Montrose, Colorado. It's good to see everyone again.
Would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. I am the president of Trade Hub International. I've been living here in Montrose for 11 years. Got six children that all love Montrose and have a wife here. I met, I guess, 2008, moved to the area and have not left since. You know, I love using and utilizing everything we have in the community. The reason I can be here is because of the airport and the ability for me to work from this location. I work closely with the SBDC, Region 10, my former chairman of planning commission, and was there for five years and served there, I guess diligently for some time. So I guess that tells you a little bit about me.
All right. David, do you have any questions?
Good morning.
Good morning.
To follow up on what, the question that Dave asked a few minutes ago, to expand on that a little bit. I'm wondering, as you know, Montrose is a growing city, but characteristic of many small towns, we are close to people. You will be in a position as a city councillor where you'll be put in a position of having to make decisions that may not sit well with your friends and neighbors. And these are people that you're close to. You probably come in contact with every day, may live in the same neighborhood. How, how do you approach, how will you approach having to make those very difficult decisions when you know it's going to affect relationships that you have in the community?
Yeah, it's very difficult at times to separate out that community feel and the people around you from making those decisions. In my time with the planning commission, we had a lot of tough decisions that came before us and a lot of decisions that had to be made that the community might not like based on what the law actually stated and what was right. And I think that's where I always stick to. If you're fair, consistent, and you're right, you don't show bias, and you do your best to demonstrate that you truly do care about the community and the people that are there. You know, giving them time to speak, listening to what they have to say, taking into consideration what the community has to offer you as far as feedback, but then doing the right thing regardless of what, what that might do for your reputation or how people might feel about you later on. There's been times where I've sat somewhere and I can tell that someone's sitting there just pointing on, that's the guy. But, you know, at the end of the day, you know, I might buy him a drink. But, you know, the reality is, is here we are in a community that's small, and you're always going to run into that. But I think that if you show fairness and consistency, in the end, it really does win out. And people just want to be heard. They want to know that you care about them genuinely. And I think in my time serving with the planning commission, over the years, I demonstrated that that's really where my heart is. I'm not coming here before city council for a position because I just want to be a city council member. I want to serve the community. I want to be here for the people, and I want to listen to what they have to say, and I want to make a better community for all of us. In the end, that's my six kids that I don't want to leave. I want them to be able to stay here, live here. Well, sometimes I want them to leave, but for the most part, not. You know, I think that's, that's all part of the story. They've grown up here, and I think that just gives you a vested interest.
Thank you.
I'll try and do the same question again, which is that we're each individually elected, and we operate to represent our own constituency, but we do work within a dynamic of a team. And so I'm curious about your leadership style when you are working as part of a team.
I think the first thing I always do is listen. I don't like to come in and pass quick judgment. I think it's important that you hear everyone out. You hear what everyone brings to the table. You process that feedback and then make decisions based on what everything, everything that's placed before you. Obviously, we all have come from different backgrounds. We all have different experiences that we bring to the table. My angle might be different than your angle, and that's okay. And we're not always going to agree, but what's important is that we respect each other. We listen to what we have to say. We take everything into consideration. And then we come to a decision, whatever that decision is, we fully support it. You know, because we are leaders, we are the people that the community looks to. Last thing we want to do is put anything out there that shows that we're not a unified body, that we're not a unified team. So showing loyalty, unity, and respect, I think, is critical. And listening to what everyone has to say and making the decision that is right for the community in the end might not be what I want, but that's not important because that would show bias. And I think it's important for what the community needs. Right now, there's a lot of things that are coming forward, especially with growth and the comprehensive plan that, you know, I've sat through those meetings and I heard all the feedback, and there's definitely 20 different directions to go. But, you know, this, this leadership, you know, we have to be able to come together and make decisive decisions and sometimes with not having all the information. But we got to come out unified in that.
You kind of answered my question already about a conflict resolution. One of the things with city councils is some weeks it takes 30 hours a week. Some weeks it takes two hours a week. Sometimes you have to study a lot of documents. With your job and your international and national travel, would there be a conflict between attending a lot of meetings one week and then hardly any the next and, and having to go to small functions? Is there going to be a conflict with that in, between the city council and your job?
I don't believe so. If you look at my record with the planning commission, I very rarely missed meetings. I've looked at, I actually went through and I looked at all the trips and anything I've got going on from now until April of next year. And I think there was three meetings between now and then that might be in conflict. Many of the local community events and things that you participate in, I do already, whether it be a Region 10 meeting or economic development meeting, it could be a DART meeting. I'm on a lot of those committees. I'm involved with a lot of those folks already, so for what I'm doing, I'm there. And I think that, you know, right now, just from, you know, due to COVID, a lot of my business has shrunk back from that international piece. And I know, you know, you and I have known each other for a while, so you know that international travel is there. That international piece has obviously shrunk down. I'm not allowed to travel like I used to. So I'm in town a heck of a lot more often than I used to be stuck in a basement. So if you guys want to pull me out and send me somewhere, I'm more than happy to go meet with people because, you know, I'm going a little stir crazy sitting there. So no, that's not a problem. I don't see it being an issue.
Well, I think you answered my question. Barbara, do you have anything else? David? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Ed Yuleberry, could you please come forward? State your name and your address for us.
Council, my name is Ed Yuleberry. I live at 2705 Country Club Way, Montrose, Colorado.
David?
Go ahead. You'll have to excuse me. This is the first time I can remember in many, many years that I have been very nervous. And I don't know why, because I know most everybody here, but...
Well, let us make you at ease, Ed.
Before we start, why don't we?
Let's go for it.
Ed, if you would, why don't you give us a little background on yourself?
Okay. I was born and raised here in Montrose. I went to junior high school at Columbine. I went to Northside School. I graduated from the high school here in Montrose in class of 66. I went to college out in California because I heard college was free for people. And being raised out on a farm on the east end of town, we couldn't afford to send me to college. So I thought this would be an opportunity for me to get educated for next to nothing. Well, unfortunately, when I got there, it was free college, but it was for residents only. So I had established residence out there, and by doing that, I joined the military. And so when I came back home to Montrose, I got involved in the community, planning commission, city council. I've been on almost every community board in Montrose, MADA, Recreation, well, I apologize. I'm teach through the rec department right now, martial arts. I was a member of Rotary, Elks, American Legion. I was an officer in the American Legion. And Housing Authority, the Senior Advisory Committee, the Botanical Gardens, and the list can go on, but I just, I don't want to belate my time or whatever, so. And I still am active in the community.
David, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ed, a similar question that I asked one of the others. As you know, Montrose faces a number of major issues now and in the foreseeable future. Could you identify what you believe to be the single biggest issue facing the citizens of Montrose, this community? And identifying that, would you tell us how you would deal with that issue?
Well, I think if infrastructure is probably our biggest, going to be our biggest issue in the future based on the fact that we're getting a lot of drive-through traffic. Recently, I read an article about Moab and their concerns because they're having the same situation I believe that Montrose is going to have in the future. And that's people coming here as a destination. Those revenues from that are no longer keeping up with the infrastructure needed for their continued growth, so they're considering taxing property taxes. I don't think that that would be a good idea for Montrose. I believe that if there's other ways to develop our infrastructure, then I think that we should look at it. I know that, as I, I have a construction business and I drive around town a lot doing repairs and stuff. I see a lot of curb gutters, sidewalks that are in need of repair. And I think that, that maybe as a council, we should look at that sort of stuff as to what, what direction are we going in? Do we really want all this traffic coming in through the town, staying in here? Or what, what's our focus? And we'd have to decide that as a council, not just Ed Yuleberry saying, well, I think we should have no growth and little growth or whatever, but as a, as a group, beings that we're representing the community, that's what we need to do. I hope that answered your question, Dave.
Thank you.
Good morning. Thanks for being here. Could you tell me a little bit about your leadership style when you're working on a team?
Okay. I went to non-commissioned officer school, which is your lower grade of officers, sergeants, corporals, that sort of stuff. And one of the things that I learned very early was the fact that in order to be a good leader, you have to be a good follower. And my particular style of management, based on my construction company, is that if I have an employee, I tell them what needs to be done. If they have a better way of doing that, to get accomplished the same results, I say, go for it. You know, you have to delegate. And sometimes that's how people learn. And I am a team player when it comes to the council, as I demonstrated when I was on the council the last time. I worked with Dave, for example. He was on the council when I was on there, and I thought we worked well together. So that's my leadership. I can't take command if I need to. I don't have a problem with that. Again, that was part of my training in the military that says that, hey, if something has to get done, do it.
Dave Frank?
Kind of similar to the question I had asked some of the other candidates is, we have, sometimes you have a very vocal group of people that are very, very adamant that their position is the one that's right. And one of the things that we have to deal with is that conflict. So tell me kind of an example of your history and kind of your philosophy on conflict resolution.
A perfect example that I can think of right now was the Tabor Amendment. Okay? That was passed by the state, and each municipality had the opportunity to, whether to accept it or to get rid of it. I was on the council and we decided to get rid of it because I knew how important that the revenues were to the city of Montrose. I caught a lot of flack for it, but that was something that, that we all as council decided that was important for Montrose. And as a town and as a community, there's things that you have to do that you don't necessarily like to do, but it's for the benefit of everybody, not just one particular group or another particular group, but for the community as a whole. I was born here and I'm probably going to end up at Cedar Cemetery. So I'm here for the long run. And again, I don't have a problem with taking criticism. I have, with over 40 years of martial arts experience, I have good self-control.
A question I would have, Ed, is being in business for yourself, how do you see that affecting your time as being able to operate with the council and the outside activities that we are involved with?
Well, at one time, I thought I was going to retire, but I tried it for a while and it didn't work. But I do have to say that as, as being a small construction company, I can pick and choose my jobs, number one. And also, I can schedule myself to do whatever needs to be done. The only issue that I would have is that showing up in my work clothes might be an issue. But if it is, that would be the only issue that I would have participating on the council.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a wonderful day.
Jeff, we didn't really give you a chance to discuss yourself and your background a little bit. If you'd like to do that, please come forward.
Thank you for calling me back up. I had grown up in Wisconsin, lived in Denver, Bend, Oregon, Missoula, Colorado Springs, and here. I started a graphic design business about five years ago. I work from home. I can live anywhere that I've got internet. I work from campsites at times, and I feel that I'm a part of a lot of people that are moving to Montrose. There's a lot of remote workers, and especially after coronavirus, more people are working from home than ever. So I work from home. I have no problem making the commitments for meetings, all the time commitments that it is. I'm involved in the community, and because I'm my own boss, I adjust my day accordingly. I volunteer with MABA. That's about 10 to 15 hours trying to inspire people to bike for utilitarian purposes. We do like Bike to Work Day. We partnered with the high school welding class, and I've got 10 bike parking racks coming into the community that MABA paid for. Cruiser rides. We did an urban bike map that outlines the best streets for biking. I volunteer with MUTT. That's the local mountain bike chapter. Go out and help build trails with them at Electric Hills. If you've been to the West Main Trailhead, you may have noticed the Adopt a Trail sign says Jeff and Luna. That's myself and my dog. We were down there this weekend doing our duties, picking up trash. We might be of the few non-corporations to adopt a trail in town. So I enjoy being involved and just really enjoy the Montrose community and here to do what I can to help it along.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'd like to certainly congratulate the three of you for applying and thank you for offering your time up to the community. for offering your time up to the community. Uh, we'll be making that decision tomorrow evening, and, or tonight, it was, it is tonight, this isn't Monday. Yeah, well, I'll be all right next month. Uh, do appreciate you guys taking the time to do that, thank you very much. The next item on our agenda today is Public Works Facility Design Contract Recommendations. Scott Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would it be possible to get this screens on? Do you have that magic power? I can screen share a couple maps and stuff to look at here, but, uh... Power lies in here somewhere, yeah, there's a button, great, thank you. Um, so, uh, the city operates its public workshop out off of, uh, sixty-four fifty road, uh, probably the best landmark now is Maverick, so we're kind of kitty corner from Maverick on the north side of San Juan. Uh, the facility was built originally, I think back in the fifties is when the land was acquired, and it's had various expansions over the years, um, but has kind of reached the end of its structural, operational, and useful life, um, and, uh, the city has planned on replacing that for a, kind of a while now and been working toward it. Um, and kind of towards that end, we started looking at getting the design and kind of the design parameters and the kind of box figured out of what we're left to work within and start to get something on paper for a new public works facility. Um, the facility itself is home to, uh, engineering utilities and then all of your typical public works functions, so parks, um, sanitation, trash recycling, fleet, um, and streets, yeah, most importantly, streets. Um, so, you know, the facility itself houses some, you know, admin operations of those departments, but a lot of the fleet and material storage, um, and aggregates and things of that sort, um, are also out there at the shop. Uh, so replacement of the facility is not set in stone by any means at this point. The idea is to, uh, do a, a design project to get, uh, get going, start getting things on paper, um, understand what the costs are, and really just start planning on it. Um, so, again, no hard date on construction or, or hard expenses at this point, or substantial expenses at this point, um, this is kind of geared towards, uh, getting the design going. Um, so, kind of to that end, I will screen share my drawing here, just to give some kind of background. Let's see, so, let me scroll down to the map so you can, for anybody not familiar with the site. Um, this is the public workshop, so on the right here, it, whoa, that's microscopic, sorry. Um, on the right here is sixty-four fifty road, maybe if I mark this up, that might help for anybody viewing, um, so you've got sixty-four fifty road on the right, San Juan on the south side, you know, Maverick is here, uh, Salvation Army is right here to the left, uh, the main admin building is here, and right now, um, so, you know, a couple of things unique to the site, uh, we're, we are within the, uh, constricted zone vertically of the, uh, uh, well, not horizontally, of the runway approach for the airport, the Montrose Airport is immediately to the north here. Um, we have, you know, kind of the primary entrance is off of sixty-four fifty road. Um, for anybody who's ever driven into the site, you get in and then you quickly go, you know, "Where do I go?" And if it weren't for some wayfinding sil- signage, we'd have people driving around in even more circles, but, um, you have some expanded recycling along the back where people drop off, you know, TVs and tires and things of that sort. It used to be where people go for green waste, um, had a lot of abuse because, as you can see, it's kind of out of view of the main administrative office. Um, but, you know, the public comes in, there's a lot of intermixing with, you know, operational activities going on, so, you know, as the public comes in, they're yielding, and we're yielding, obviously, when we're driving to, you know, loaders and backhoes running through dump trucks, um, kind of, there's a pretty severe mixing of public needs when they come in, um, and operational needs, which creates, um, some degree of a safety concern. Um, I don't know if we've had any major incidents that I'm aware of, but, um, it's not ideal and it's not, um, very welcoming to the public because they come in and are quickly kind of overwhelmed. Um, you have an existing fueling station, uh, here, uh, so that takes care of police department, um, and all city admin, uh, fueling and operational fueling. Um, kind of some of the things the site's lacking, uh, a lot of drainage controls, so this was built before modern kind of drainage standards for water quality, um, water treatment, wash bays, things of that sort, um, for stormwater, um, and I, I picked that one first just because, um, I'm, as part of my job is stormwater preservation, so that one comes to mind first, but interior of the buildings, we do have some, uh, you know, the facility itself is kind of showing its age, um, some leaks and, and HVAC issues, things of that sort, ADA access issues, um, uh, operational issues of, you know, uh, meeting spaces versus, you know, public spaces and, and collaboration spaces and things of that sort, so, um, you know, it's worked, it's, it's done its job over the years, but it's kind of, as we go towards continued growth in the, in the city, plus, you know, reaching kind of the end of its life, those two are coming together, um, that it's getting ripe to, to work towards its replacement. So the, I'll maybe go next into the vision of the project, um, because I think that kind of sets the tone of what we're trying to accomplish here. Um, I guess, any questions on the background before I move on to the vision?
I just wanted to point out, uh, in the paragraph right above this, when it says that the deficiencies are not limited to, and then it has insufficient floor space, administration staff, low ADA, ADA accessibility, undersized restroom, structural deficiency of the building, poor operational layout, insufficient heated storage for cold-sensing vehicles, insufficient wash bays, insufficient this, insufficient that, insufficient, it's like, dear heavens, it kind of surprises me these things are still standing up.
That's a common phrase I like to use in contracting, including but not limited to, because there's always the piece you're gonna miss, and I didn't want it to be a gripe fest, but, um, but, I mean, just...
I just think that, I would say that the, "It's ripe for updating" is a major understatement.
Well, I mean, it's, it works, it's, it operationally works, it, uh, you know, there are opportunities that, you know, I, is kind of how I would frame them, but, um, and there's, you know, there's smaller nuances too, I just, you know, I don't want a page of problems either, it's more focused on the solution, but yeah, good, interesting catch. We use that a lot in contracting because, you know, your scope of work is this, but you don't want a contractor to say, "Hey, you missed this little piece," and now they have an opening in their contract, so, you know, it's one of my top ten favorite sentences to use.
You mentioned all the, um, departments that are based out of the public works facility. Is there any estimate maybe from Bill or Ann about how many employees that is that make up all those departments? It's, it's a lot of employees.
Yeah, it's about, uh, one-third of our workforce, which is about a hundred and eighty people, plus seasonals, several dozen, uh, summer seasonals are housed there as well.
Sure, it seems like when I've been there, eh, there's like one restroom, maybe there's another one I didn't know about, but...
One and a half, yeah.
Yeah, I just, as one example of many of how it is a little bit under...
We've outgrown it, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
It's just a good thing, I mean, it's, we're, it's all positive things, we're managing the positive, gotten, gotten bigger, gotten more staff, you know, more things happening, you know, this is the next weak link in that operation, so...
I appreciate you focusing on the solution more than the problem, but I think sometimes our job is to be able to justify to the person who is gonna walk up to us tomorrow and say, "I, I don't understand why you guys are looking at a new public works facility, what's wrong with the current one?" So appreciate your optimism, but sometimes we need to fully understand the problem before we can even endorse a solution.
Certainly, yep, and if for anybody, public or on your side also, that would like a tour of the facility as we start getting into this to help understand it, um, uh, certainly are able to do that, because I think it's, it's a great thing to walk around and see. Um, we did that even during the RFP, we did a video, uh, that we posted on YouTube, so I can also get you a link, um, kind of taking a tour and looking at some of those operational things, because we want to make sure that that information gets into the designer's heads so that they know, the architects know how to, you know, operationally fix those kind of things, so.
Um, so, can I just add one thing, just to clarify, so, um, the needs at the public works facility really aren't based on adding new employees or growth, we haven't added that many. Uh, if you look at our budget message every year, we compare the size of our workforce to where it was, um, ten years ago, and we have barely crossed over the amount of employees we had prior, so it's really just an outdated building. It's really old, it's very similar to the old Columbine Middle School issue, there, you know, over the years, there's been a lot of flooding, offices get flooded, uh, they've hodgepodge for fleet maintenance, trying to, uh, fit things in there while they're working on them is very difficult. A lot of our major pieces of equipment cost upwards of four hundred thousand dollars and they're sitting outside all of the time because there's no indoor parking or any of those types of things, so, a lot of the issues that the county public works, uh, faced, you know, when they built their new facility, are the same reasons we would need a new facility, not just growth, the number of people, but being able to do, uh, work the proper way.
Thank you.
David, any, anything? Well, I have been through the facility out there, and I, I do agree that it certainly has aged, uh, and I think one of the concerns too is we've had difficulty at times with people walking into the site and things have happened once in a while disappearing, so I think from a safety and security standpoint, we have two very strong issues to deal with there.
Certainly, yep, and that's kind of a primary focus of our vision here of, of addressing some of that, so, um, kind of segueing into the vision, so, uh, the intent is to look at, you know, so this, this, we'd have the consultant come in, um, do product interviews with essentially every city department, um, to understand the operational needs now and into the foreseeable future. We don't want to build a, a facility that, you know, becomes dated within twenty years, you know, kind of thing, so, you don't want to build it too big, it's a sweet spot you want to find, you don't want to be too big because then you're, you have underli- underutilized infrastructure, um, you don't want to be too small, you outgrow it on day one, and so the focus of this will be to, um, fully understand the operational needs, um, storage needs, uh, things of that sort, both administration and, um, down to the field worker level. Um, to size a building right, um, kind of initially, um, but also design it and construct it in a way that it's somewhat modular, so that as, you know, continued growth does occur and operational needs grow with it, um, should that occur, assuming it will, um, that allows the facility to be expanded upon relatively easy in a non-hog-podge manner, you know, so, you see a lot of times, expansions happen, but you're taking a circuitous route through a hallway to get to the bathroom kind of thing. Um, so planning it into the initial phases so that it is, um, expandable and modular into the future. I'll just kind of hit on each of these paragraphs. Um, so as far as building standards, the in- the intent would be to build it, it's kind of similar to what they do for police departments, that it is built to a somewhat higher standard as far as, um, structural goes and durability and reliability, um, during a, you know, if there's a crisis or some major natural disaster or event in town, this becomes a core piece of infrastructure in order to maintain operations and quality of life for the city, um, so those do put it to a, a somewhat higher, uh, degree of standard, or standard, um, of design. Um, back to the separation issue, so, you know, we want a welcoming, inviting experience for the public, we do have interactions with the public down there for various permits or expanded recycling program, um, we want them to be able to come in and easily find their way to the front desk, and once, once in, easily have their meds net, uh, needs met, um, so that, you know, operationally staff are, are in close enough proximity that they're able to have a good experience, come in and get out without having to overlap with, uh, dump truck or, or loader running through the site, um, or getting lost trying to find their way to the front door. Um, as far as, you know, the site itself, the intent is to have a safe, um, and functionally, or operationally functional site that is focused on safety and operations, so, you know, think pull-through bays, um, uh, right now, you know, in the winter, if we need storage, a lot of them having to cram on top of each other at a very specific spot and angle in order to get into there, which creates just a lot of operational challenges and, and, line of fire things for, uh, you know, uh, an accident to occur, you know, with your backing in a garage with two feet to spare on each side of a, of a, another vector as you're trying to get in before the freeze comes, um, making these things a little more, uh, user-friendly so that they're pull-through bays, um, dedicated storage for various areas so that we're not having to do that stacking and overlapping, um, to, uh, just increase safety and operations, uh, and then as far as the building itself, you know, we want it to be, uh, operational from a work standpoint, so, you know, post-COVID, it's kind of a unique thing, work habits have changed, um, you know, the, I think the trend for a while was, there got, you know, they had, you know, you think, think of like Google and stuff, they have these entire floors of buildings with no dividers, um, and I thought that was the way to collaborate, and that's, that's not so much the way to collaborate in a post-COVID world, um, you know, so we want, and we have a lot of sensitive issues, you know, either with personnel or the public, and so, you know, the, a vision is to have, uh, dedicated spaces so people can do their private matters and work efficiently, um, but also have a lot of opportunities for collaboration, so common spaces for, for, um, you know, debriefings in the mornings, which are a common thing in all the departments, uh, meetings, uh, bringing in the public, having quick sit-down areas, um, and also incorporating some landscaping and outdoor, uh, meeting areas, um, kind of, in this newer world, that's kind of a, uh, we think is a need, um, that people would like to have the opportunity to collaborate outside in a, in a nice, nicer landscaped atmosphere than just in a drabble office. Um, as far as costs and this aesthetic, so we're trying to strike that balance point. Um, this is a, you know, near the entrance corridor to the city, so we want a facility that is nice and welcoming, um, but we also don't want a, a golden public works facility, so, trying to use simple construction techniques, steel buildings, um, but not just a boring steel bu- steel building, so incorporating architectural elements, you know, such as, you know, various bends, facades, you know, slant roofs, um, different finishes to, to, you know, go a step above a steel building while not going over the top. You know, another focus of the product is also, you know, we have a lot of utilitarian work, so we have a lot of aggregate stockpiles and pipe stockpiles and equipment, setting that, um, back further in the lot so that it's shielded by, you know, the nice buildings and some of the landscaping, um, to create an inviting kind of presence along San Juan, um, which does get a lot of visibility. And then kind of last piece of the vision is trying to reuse what we can, so there are some shop elements and things that could be reused, and so, um, we've, uh, in our procurement documents, made, made sure that they're aware that that's a focus, um, to reuse what we can and not waste anything that is valuable. Um, that being said, there's a lot of Asian equipment there that's probably beyond its useful life and, and those we'd look to recycle. Um, so any questions on the vision before I go into procurement?
I, I guess one question I might have, um, as far as the green waste, are, you'll still have, uh, area available for that onsite, or we're, we're gonna have to look at something different?
Um, expanded recycling, so green waste is no longer accepted, but the, uh, tires, TVs, refrigerators, I think, are some of the ones we take down there, um, for a fee, um, to save them a trip to the landfill, or some of the things that maybe the landfill doesn't take, is that a fair statement? Um, so, a lot of this information in the vision, um, background was put into an RFP document along with what we envisioned as a scope for a two-phase project. Um, so we broke it into the first phase, trying to understand the site and really get our grasp on, um, what the limitations are and what may weigh into design, um, as far as proper layout of the site, so things to think of, you know, possible environmental considerations, um, traffic and circulation, so if, you know, our access points are governed by a permitting process with CDOT, you know, that will drive where the access is, which would drive where, you know, the buildings can go and things of that sort. Um, other things to think of, uh, like geotechnical, if there's areas that are better or worse for foundation conditions that could save money, um, uh, stakeholder engagement, so talking, you know, like to the neighbor properties, um, especially the airport, um, airport considerations as far as the runway approach, really getting that box, is kind of the word I use, defined of, of the box that we have to work within, to then start looking at how do we, um, lay this thing out and fit, understand all the needs, um, so that would include the interviews, and then understand the constraints to how we can address those needs and fit, um, the various pieces of that puzzle onto the, onto the site. Um, so that first phase is what we're, um, seeking, uh, funding for now, which is, um, a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, I did have an omission on that that I'll get into in a minute, but, um, uh, the idea is to get through phase one, get kind of general buy-in on what that site would look like, um, and how it's gonna be laid out, and then, uh, with future phases of the project, you know, either go towards final design to refine those and create actual suitable for construction plan sets and, uh, specs, you know, so a detailed design package would be phase two. Um, you also, depending on how the project turns out, could look at like a design build or something at that point, depending on kind of what makes sense, so, the idea is to get our heads wrapped around it and, and get pointed in the right direction and then stay adapt, kind of take an adaptive management approach, you know, what, what the world looks like a year and a half from now when that's done, start looking at, okay, when do we want to bite off the next piece, whether that's further design or even working towards, um, phased construction. Another piece of this is the site is large enough that it lends itself well to phased construction, so we can identify, oh, we need a new fueling station first, let's build that this year, and the salt storage this year, and that frees up the building space to then do an outbuilding the next year, and then, you know, so you could look at, um, implementing over time, um, that's kind of the stuff that'll get flushed out in this phase one to, to start helping us bring into focus what the actual implementation plan would look like for future budget years. Um, so with that, we put out three, uh, or we got three bids back on our request for proposals, uh, Chamberlain Architects was the low bid, um, we, we review these as best value, so it's... value, so it's a combination of price and qualifications. Um, so in this case, um, we actually had three really solid proposals, um, and Chamberlain was the lowest price, and so through that, he, uh, that firm rated out the best at a three-point-three. Um, so, uh, we're recommending award to both the low bidder and highest scoring, so best value contractor, um, in this case. Um, I do, do need to point out a typo I'll fix on the memo for the final meeting. It's Chamberlain without the A, so, um, L-I-N at the end, so I apologize for the typo there. Um, but yeah, the three groups, Chamberlain Architects, they're out of Grand Junction. Um, the other group was Blythe, which is the team working on the police department. And then CSG Architecture, we hadn't worked with in the past, um, but they, they were out of Greeley, um, put forward a pretty solid proposal, um, but were just a little higher price than the others. Um, so the team that makes up Chamberlain, so it's kind of the core of what we review for, is, is looking for a great qualified team. Um, the members of that team are listed here. Um, HDR Group, which was a, a big win for us, they, um, specialize in this type of facility. Um, they got a resume of, you know, I think it was eight hundred some, uh, similar public-type facilities that they've worked on. So they can help us with a lot of the operational and unique elements that, you know, you just don't know what you don't know. And so getting a good team that understands some of the unique nuances of Public Works operations, um, was a win for us. Uh, Buckhorn Engineering, they're out of Montrose here, they'd be working on some of the geotechnical, um, civil, structural, and survey work. Um, Turnkey Consulting out of Grand Junction, work on the traffic work. Julie Wolverton, landscape design, Grand River Environmental out of Grand, uh, Clifton, I guess, um, environmental work. FCI Constructors, um, they were gonna help with some of the cost estimation. We asked them to, um, get a contractor involved to really make legit, our good, really good, um, cost estimates towards the end of the design phase, so we can understand what we need to plan for as far as construction goes. Um, then Big Horn Engineering out of Grand Junction. So really strong, you know, essentially, except for HDR, all western slope team, um, uh, working on this, and some even in Montrose. So the schedule, um, this project would carry into, uh, first quarter of twenty-two, uh, so the kind of deliverable at the end of that would be, you know, get through all the stakeholder engagement, uh, through the remainder of this year, start on schematic design, and have, uh, completed schematic design by first quarter of next year. Um, so what that looks like is, you know, a site layout, you know, kind of taking into consideration all those constraints, um, some, uh, rough renderings of kind of the building, the approximate layout, you know, not detailed dimensions of each individual room, but, um, rough layout of the building and kind of, uh, preliminary renderings of, of what that finished product may look like. Um, and that's, you know, something that the city will, will weigh in on throughout this process, is, and the public, you know, as through stakeholder engagement, is, you know, kind of architectural finish and look and feel of the building. Um, would all happen in twenty-one, um, with a lot of engagement. And then, you know, at that point in twenty-two, you know, it'd be about this time next year, um, we could start looking at, you know, future budget years, what do we want to start chipping away at, um, going into future budget phases. So then, as far as contract administration, so, um, looking to, this would be managed, uh, kind of collectively between, uh, the torment heads at Public Works, so Jim Shad and myself. Jim's more, kind of more focused. So Jim's in charge of the PD, for example, um, kind of real focused on the building and operations and the vertical side of things. I would kind of stay involved for the horizontal, you know, parking lot, site work, utilities type stuff. Um, so we'd kind of tag-team it that way. Um, we thought this project would cost about two hundred thousand dollars, so we're, you know, forty-two thousand under what we anticipated this first phase of design to cost. Um, and the payment for this would be out of some reserves that we're sitting in. Um, when we sold, we sold a property on Banner Road, uh, that used to be used for bio-solids spreading. Um, when we sold that, that was back in twenty-nineteen, uh, the intent was to reserve that money towards the Public Works facility. Um, so it's just sitting in a, a kind of pot earmarked for this cause, is that a fair statement? Um, and the contracts are on a time and materials not to exceed basis, so the intent is to establish a cap, and then, um, we pay for what we actually use. Um, so on that vein, that's where I had an omission on my, um, uh, numbers. Uh, there was a, I think it was an additional five thousand dollar element, uh, that would help us, uh, go a little deeper. It was something, in our proposals, we say, here's everything we think needed to be done, and then if you have something you would recommend, give us a price for it. Um, they recommended, uh, putting together a detailed list of equipment needs early, um, to try and start getting some of that procurement kind of worked out and pricing, and getting that ironed out at this stage instead of later. Um, so that was an additional five thousand dollars that I had, uh, failed to include in this one fifty-seven. So if it's acceptable to you, the revised would be, um, for the one sixty-two. Um, but also on top of that, we are, you know, decently enough, under budget, and this site is unique enough. Um, this might be a good candidate too, if we wanted to put a ten percent contingency on top of that, just given the uncertainties. Um, again, we only pay for what we use, um, and that fund is, you know, obviously well-healthy. We're only using, uh, twenty percent of that million dollars from that property sale. So, um, if you'd be open to it, I think that would give us good flexibility into design also. So, um, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, counsel? I just, we had-
So the one sixty-two eight oh six figure does not include any kind of contingency. Um, I guess, would you call that an, an owner contingency, in case we want to increase the scope? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. And usually we don't put contingencies on design projects, because usually our design products are like, you know, A-road to this corridor, so it's very easy to scope exactly what we're gonna need. This one has, you know, a site this old, and this, with this many layers, inevitably, you know, may have some skeletons of things that come up that, that we may want to expand the scope. So that type of contingency would allow us to, oh, we need to do an additional, you know, asbestos study on this building or something that wasn't scoped, to have that flexibility to adapt quickly, um, if those kind of things come up. But it's only used, um, for things that we would authorize. It's not, it's, it's, and it's all just time and materials of, of what they propose, we approve it, and then that becomes part of the scope.
Okay, so you're saying it's, it's at our discretion to expand the scope, it's not a contingency in case it costs more than they thought it would to do what they've already been on?
Hundred percent. So, everything that's in scope right now has a fixed price that they would not be able, allowed to exceed under the contract. Yep, very, very good point.
So when you bring this proposal before us for council approval, you're gonna put that ten percent-
If you guys are open to it, I can update the memo and, and correct the typo.
I, I think that would be desirable, because that gives us a, a little bit more flexibility and a little bit more options, because as you say, this site is pretty unique, being landlocked as it is, to be able to utilize the best practice for that, I think would be a, a beneficial thing for us.
Well, I think one, one item too, is, in, in the past, we've looked at potential other locations, and, and the location we have now, being a somewhat centralized in the city, does save us a lot of cost and fuel of getting equipment from one part of town to another. So I know that we, we hadn't in the past looked at that. Question I also had was, in looking at the summary proposals, there was a fairly widespread dollar-wise in that, uh, do you have any comments on?
The, it wasn't too surprising. Um, I think it's within the range I would expect, given the market right now. So there's, um, a lot of consultants, the, I was, I was very happy that we even got proposals, frankly. Um, the, a lot of the consultants, a lot of these teams we were after are extremely busy. Um, you know, within the construction and design industry, you know, regionally, it's getting overwhelmed. And so, when that happens, you see more dis, or more differences in prices, um, because, um, a lot of them are just plain too busy. Um, uh, you know, we talked to Chamberlain about it, uh, through the, about their price, and they said they were aggressive, because they really liked the project and, and saw its potential, and have, um, been aware of it for a while, and, and just chomping at the bit for it to come out, um, uh, for, for bids. And so they, you know, admittedly priced it aggressively, um, but they're confident in their number, um, even post-bid, and, uh, are, are confident they can do it for that.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Just, just this one.
A comment, um, Chamberlain Associates has done a lot of the architectural design work at CMU on the Grand Junction, Junction campus, and they've done a, an outstanding job. So, um, I, I've seen, seen their work. So I think we, we'll be happy with them.
Great, that's good to know. Thank you.
Anything else?
I think, Doug, to your point too, as far as the site evaluation, so, yeah, you know, picking this as the final home for Public Works was part of a previous effort to really evaluate where it makes sense to put the facility. And yeah, this is the one we resonated on. Um, you know, for access to the public, ease of, you know, coming and going, visibility, uh, it's a good chance to clean up this site. Um, and then operationally, you know, being somewhat centrally located for emergencies, you know, think, you know, waterline breaks and responding quickly, um, and then operationally fuel costs and things of that. So it really add up with how much fleet miles we put on, um, when you start getting further away from the city core. So, um, yeah, we're happy to, happy to be here in the middle. That's a great point. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is general city council discussion. Counsel, does anyone have something?
I think this is appropriate to bring this up in the state of the city, about the whole of the city, and I think it's even one to mention.
Is your mic on?
It is now. Um, I spoke with, with the city attorney about bringing this up for discussion at this work session, and he felt it was appropriate to, to bring it up now. But this evening, on our agenda, we have the consideration of a proclamation for, uh, Tim Foster Day here in Montrose. And I believe the way that the proclamation is currently drafted, it suggests June second as being Tim Foster Day in Montrose. And the only thing I wanted to throw out for your consideration, and you can think about it, and we can discuss it tonight, um, I understand that Montrose County has also passed a proclamation, uh, designating June thirtieth as, uh, Tim Foster Day, as well as the City of Grand Junction and Mesa County doing the same thing for June thirtieth. I just throw out whether we want to consider being in line with all of the other entities that are honoring him using the same day, or whether we want to do June second. And so, just food for thought for tonight.
That might be a very good suggestion.
I think part of the thought was that Mr. Foster's coming to Montrose tomorrow morning, um, to, um, to kick off the forum that's happening at the CMU campus, and that, um, I think part of it was part of that programming. Kathy Hevers put it together with help of, um, Derek-
Right.
From CMU.
Yeah, and, and I did, uh, I did speak to, to Derek, um, he was fine with whatever the city wanted to do.
Can we read it tomorrow, but make the official day lineup? Maybe that's, uh, an idea. I mean, he's, yeah.
Any reason why we couldn't do that? I mean, when we read the proclamation, doesn't necessarily mandate that we do it on that day.
Okay.
Would that make sense, do you think?
I think so, yeah. As long as Kathy and her group are okay with it.
Staff, do you have any concerns with making changes?
No, um, Barbara was exactly right. It was, that was the date that was requested. So we can just change that to match the county. It would make a lot of sense for it to be all on the same day, and then just have you all read it tomorrow.
All right, thank you. Barbara, do you have anything?
Um, no, I don't.
You gotta be kidding me.
I don't, I, I don't think so. I mean, I guess it would be a, a good segue, just to say that, um, forum programming, which is a community, um, educational program, um, hosted at CMU, is picking up tomorrow after a fifteen-month hiatus. And, and it's a great program. It's not a city program or anything, but it's a great community, um, program, and that's at CMU's Cascade Hall from eight to nine tomorrow. And tomorrow is, um, honoring Tim Foster and an update, um, on CMU and what they're currently doing in Junction, and what their involvement is here, um, on the Montrose campus as well.
Yeah, I think one thing too, that the forum has done, is it's provided us a, a good platform to provide information to the community on, on different issues. David? I don't believe I have anything else. How about staff comments? Chief Hall, would you like to give us an update on the new building?
Sure. It's coming up.
Why don't you come on up here where we can see you better?
Absolutely.
So, as you can see outside, it's coming up, uh, they're essentially out of the ground now, which is, um, my understanding in the construction world, and maybe Jim can comment a little bit more. The ground is probably the most challenging part, and once you're through that, and I heard someone mention skeletons, we didn't find any skeletons, so that, that's a good thing. Uh, and now, uh, we have our stair tower right outside here, and then we'll see an elevator tower that will be coming up soon. And then all of the steel will be anchored around those, those two points. Uh, so you should see a lot of activity here in the next month as, as, uh, things start to come up.
Great.
It's been, it's been really good so far.
And I'd like to thank your staff and also the city staff, uh, you guys have done real well at shuffling people around and finding a home for everybody while we're in the middle of this construction. I think that's certainly, uh, is helpful.
Yeah, it's good. And also, um, kudos to our public too, for being patient. You know, it, it's, uh, I've heard of other communities where this thing out here is a burden, and people are, you know, not very excited about it. And our public actually has come up and said how excited they are to see this happening, and have been very patient with us, as they, they also work around to, to get the things done that they need to do too. So it's exciting.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, do you have anything?
I don't either.
All right. If there are no other items, uh, take a motion to adjourn. All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, folks. Yeah, you're right.